Standing in for Kathy today, welcome everybody. Calling to order the board meeting today at six o'clock right online. Hi Barbara.
Hello.
All right, for those who so choose, we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stand, is anybody taking point on that today?
No.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of the minutes for the September twenty first meeting, twenty twenty three. It will be only extensions where it's said and one more person. Anybody have any certain or anything to discuss on the minutes? So moved.
Second.
Great. Do we have anything for public input?
Yes, I do. I have one, item three to your.
All of them.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I just didn't know that we both.
Oh, sorry.
I know.
All in favor, I'm trying to pass. All in favor of approving the minutes from September twenty first, twenty twenty three, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
I abstained.
Ted's not here, so he doesn't abstain. There you go. All right, thank you Barbara.
Public input. Okay, I'll just stand up so maybe you can hear me a little better that way. So receive this from Mark Grimm, Almond County Legislature. Dear Library Board Trustees, I was disappointed to see the library board is poised to ban the pledge of allegiance from the beginning of board meetings. The pledge does not support any particular candidate or party or administration. It makes no claims our nation is without faults or has fully reached our ideals of liberty and justice for all. Rather, the pledge underscores some of our core values that should and must be cultivated in order to help make us a more perfect union. I watched the September twenty first debate and offered these challenges to positions taken. First, we're only one of two regional libraries that still has the pledge. That's not really a defense. It is a call to pay more attention to what other libraries are doing. Our library is not the oddball. It is the standard here that others should follow. The Gilderland Town Board, the Gilderland School District, and the Albany County Legislature all begin with the pledge. Two, forced patriotism. The pledge is voluntary for every trustee. Each is entitled to participate or not. The question is why should trustees who are proud to recite the pledge be prevented from doing so in an official capacity? Three, under God phrase. Reports have ruled time and again, the under God phrase does not violate the separation of church and state. The Constitution guarantees you can pay homage to any God you wish or follow no religion at all. Our founding fathers did not believe in a godless society. The closing sentence of the Declaration of Independence states, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. I still get chills when I read it. The Pledge of Allegiance is an enduring commitment for our resolve to follow the path of remarkable principles that more than a million of our veterans have been willing to die for. Let's not miss a single chance to remind us all of sacrifices made and the much work yet to be done. Footnote, I believe no staff member, director, or anyone else should be asked to leave the pledge. They are there to advise the board and are not elected officials. And that's it for public comment.
Moving on to personnel actions. So here are the personal actions to accept the retirement of Elizabeth Bonnie St Pierre, part-time senior clerk in the Circulation and Collection Services Department effective September twenty twenty nineteen. To accept the resignation of James Collins, full-time library clerk, Circulation and Collection Services Department effective October ninth, twenty twenty three. To approve the appointment of Nicole Zegarotto, part-time library clerk, full-time library clerk in the Circulation and Collection Services Department effective eleven, October eleventh, twenty twenty three. And P. Dean LaRusso, full-time library assistant in the Programs and Services Department effective October sixteen, twenty twenty three. And to accept the promotion of Kathleen Tyrell, first full-time librarian one in the Programs and Services Department, a full-time department head, library librarian two in the Circulation and Collection Services Department effective October eighteen, twenty twenty three. Moving to approve these personnel actions. Still moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Now we are moving on to the schedules report for September twenty twenty three with George.
All right, good evening. So in your packages and it was sent out a couple of days ago, I'll start with the statements of net position and revenue expenses. And I mean, it's a typical month. When you look at it, you can see that our short-term investments went down slightly because in months that we don't get the tax levy, we have CDs that mature currently that cover the operating expenses. So it's, you know, written down about three hundred thousand dollars. Cash and cash equivalents, and we'll talk about that more later, but we do have about one point six million dollars of cash and cash equivalents. Let's see, and I think that's about the only changes on the balance sheet that are kind of, you know, noteworthy basically. On the revenue and expenses, we continue to be under budget on our expenses. When you look at the current month, we're about twenty eight thousand, eight fifty eight favorable. You know, a little bit in the salary and fringe benefits, library materials, I think. I remember from last year, it just took a while for them to kind of build up and everything. We talked about the statement at the Finance Committee meeting a couple of nights ago. And insurance is different. It's a negative number for the current month. And we were told that we did get some dividends in that offset the cost of insurance, so. But I think it's still early. We're only three months into the year to really, you know, look at trends and say, oh, we're going to have an issue with that. But there's really nothing looking at a year-to-date basis where we're just really way over budget or anything. Utilities are a little bit over, but I think that's about the worst unfavorable variance, and that's not that bad. Under the interest and investment income, we are very favorable to budget about ten thousand dollars for the month and twenty four thousand dollars for the year. I think we budgeted sixty thousand dollars for interest income during the year. And, you know, we're a third of the way through and we're already at thirty nine thousand dollars on a year-to-date basis. So we'll do, we'll do better than that basically. And are there any questions that I can answer? Give your statement.
Fantastic.
Oh, you know, I'm always hoping that somebody will come up with a public comment and just compliment my answer. I know it's a pipe dream, but.
Well, after the show. George wants some public comment. Come on down.
I'll send somebody eventually.
No, careful what you ask for.
Yeah, that's true.
No, I guess it's good news usually.
Yeah, yeah, you kind of want to just, you know, slide by, I guess. But on the investment statement, you know, it's a lot shorter than it was six months ago because the CDs are maturing. And when you look, you know, we have some that are due in October and November and some treasury bills that we had invested. But we do have, we do have quite a bit of cash sitting in our account with LPL, almost a million dollars. And, you know, we'll talk about that later on and everything and why we want to make slight changes. And I think that's it. And now the check run was distributed. We went over that. I actually don't have a copy, but, you know, we did review it. And if there's questions, please make sure to help on that a little bit. I don't always know what all of these finish on, but. I can help if there's any questions. I think that's it. Because we need a motion to accept or do something.
Everything on the check register looked good to me, so I would move that we accepted that register.
Second.
All in favor of accepting the check register, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's your chance for something exciting. That is passed. Six eleven. Are you all set?
I am. Thank you very much.
To our directors and department heads reports for September twenty twenty three.
Super. So, you know, a major thing for me personally and for the library was the opening of the cafe, grand opening on September sixth. And then my, my own monthly report looks a little light, but trust me, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes work, especially since thankfully four board committees met this month and all prepared their reports. And really nice to kind of compare that to some previous years when it was hard to get a meeting and hard to get a report. So thank you for that. I want to congratulate Kathleen Tyrell for her promotion starting as an L two department head in CCS department. And a concern was raised last month about what was called the ending of the department heads meeting. But, and I believe I addressed that, but now that she's been hired, Natalie and Nate, the two assistant directors, will start, you know, multi, a couple of times a month, services management meetings. So this will be every department head in the PPS department or the CCS department that faces the public directly. So all the, all the public-facing folks will meet regularly with Natalie and Nate. We've been challenged to fill positions and there are still four vacant positions in the PPS department. So I do want to thank Christina and Brianna, two of the three department heads in that part of the library because they're doing a great job with some shortages and in addition, they had an illness or two. So the department itself is doing a great job kind of helping each other out as we try to get through that. The new passport program is going well. Clerk Heather Mulcahy is our newest passport agent and she joins five others, Quinn Chen, Michelle Boydell, Seth Strach, excuse me, Sean Silvernail, and Debbie West and Natalie, and those folks are doing a great job. Thank you. The expedition party for the Upper Hudson Library System was a great success with more than six hundred attending. So I want to thank Maria and Luanne, Marcia, Corey, Alicia, and Natalie for all working on that. It is Luanne's first month as a member of the Gilderland Chamber of Commerce Board. She essentially took my place. And so that was great. That helped with the grand opening of the cafe. But even more so, the, a year or so ago, she came to me with a proposal that we also join the Capital Region Chamber of Commerce. And ribbon cuttings and grand openings often, you know, look and feel successful if there's a lot of people there. And the Capital Region Chamber of Commerce really came out for us, so I appreciate that, Luanne. I want to say goodbye to Bonnie St Pierre, retiring after twenty-nine years. Bonnie is the sort of person who, I've been here ten years and I can't recall a single difficulty ever working with Bonnie in any way. But she's also the kind of person who wanted no fanfare of any kind, so I probably just violated that. I just want to update people on the memorial services for Cindy Wada, our former volunteer coordinator. She will be celebrated at Hamilton Union Presbyterian Church at eleven AM on Veterans Day, November eleventh. And then from twelve to two, there's a potluck at the fire station just across the street. So if you're interested in going, you should be able to part once for those two events. It's across Schoolcraft Street, not across Western Avenue, so. The virtual author talks that we started two or three months ago last month had five hundred and twenty-three views. So to me, that's really fantastic that people are spending an hour with some of their favorite authors. In the circulation report, you'll notice that all categories were down for this month, which is pretty typical for September. Back to school usually means that there's a reduction in circulation. That's usually temporary. It is higher this year than it was in that, the total circulation is higher this year than it was in September of twenty twenty-two. Not the reduction, but the good number. Nate Haye became our second assistant director on September twenty-fifth. And, you know, it honestly feels to me like I've already been working with Nate for like six months. Now, partly that is kind of true because he was substituting here on the reference desk for a little while before we hired him as an assistant director. But he's really hit the ground running and is doing a great job. We're also welcoming, welcoming back someone who stepped down a couple of years ago, Sing Yun Yili, who was a circulation senior clerk and is now back as a library assistant in the CCS department. We have two new book clubs, the Realm Explorers Book Club, run by Emily Viscuso, which is sci-fi and fantasy. And of course, the Fright Club, which I mentioned last month, run by Christina Ronald and Natalie. We had thirty-six adult programs in September with six hundred and seventy-eight people attending, so that is pretty healthy. Shout out to Jill Tomonoski, one of our reference librarians, who's also our local history librarian. She won a, an award called the Karen A. Stewart Local History Collection Award, which allowed her to attend the Mid-Atlantic Regional Archives Conference where she is right now, with much of the bill paid by someone else, so that's great. We have a new service called Brain Fuse. It's available over in the adult reference area. It's really fantastic. And it was used last month by five hundred and seventy people. It gets you one-on-one help with the three main Microsoft programs, PowerPoint, Excel, and Word. On-demand, one-on-one help. And also it helps you do things like write resumes and other computer-oriented tasks. Some of the one-on-one help is only available after two PM, but it's really a nice service that we're glad to be offering. In the Community Engagement and Outreach Department that Maria runs, we had our Rite Aid Vaccine Clinic and administered eighty-six vaccines, the flu vaccine and the RSV vaccine, to sixty different patrons, including eight kids. So that's a wonderful annual program. We also, it'd be easy to miss this, you know, and I'm, I'm a little bit of a realist, like it's a long monthly report that you got. But we have resumed holding Wrath, Rape, Aggression Defense with the Gilderland Police Department. So twenty-three people were trained in how to be aware of surroundings, how to prevent that sort of trying, how to reduce the risk, how to avoid, and as a last result, how to defend yourself. I do want to flip over to one page in the monthly report because this collection or outreach and community engagement department is really something to, to be aware of. It's a, it's a brand-new direction for us. So Maria writes in that, "This month, I debuted the new GPL Academy concept, which focuses on providing programs for the educational and cultural enrichment of our older adult patrons. I scheduled a variety of programs on Zoom and in-person, which is a necessary strategy to reach audiences that are willing to come to the library and those who still prefer to participate safely from home." Me inserting a comment here that might tend to include older patrons who often have other health conditions that combined with viruses and such can be deadly. Nearly four hundred patrons took part in poetry appreciation workshops, book discussions, exercise classes, personal safety training, financial programming, health-related programs, and not one but two concerts. So bravo there. And then I just want to point out, like every year in July, we do ask the board to consider being closed on Indigenous Peoples' Day slash Columbus Day. And typically, we get the well-meaning response that I would, I might say if I were a board member, which is, well, people will be off at school and they'll want to come to the library. Well, that applies to the parents that work here as well. So it, being one of eight libraries that's open as opposed to twenty ones that's closed is difficult for the parents on their staff. And since that happened this month, I just want to point that out to you because there's a little more immediacy to that in the same month than talking about it in July. In the Youth Services Department, we reached a milestone with their Kids and Family Newsletter, which topped seven hundred subscribers for the first time, so that's great. It has a fifty-four percent open rate, and we want to welcome new librarians Genevieve Getz and Sarah Russo in that department. They were in the Personnel Actions last month, but they've now been there for about a month. And they too have done some major things in their time, which are detailed in their report. So they hit the ground running as well. I want to call out Sean in IT. You wouldn't necessarily think of space heaters as an IT responsibility, and technically they're not. But Sean was aware of the finding that we had some space heaters in here that are no longer up to grade for safety, and so he coordinated the replacement of all the space heaters with ones that meet code and all the safety recommendations. And George, I'm sure you're in particular happy to know about that, so as a firefighter. Maintenance had a good fire inspection, removed the tree that came down through nature over in the staff parking lot. We have a, our upper parking lot over here needs to be vacuumed once a year. It's a porous parking lot. So there are no drains in the parking lot because the whole parking lot is a drain. So I always like to point that out because it's kind of interesting, but it was vacuumed this month. And then lastly, we did learn that we do need to buy a new one more. So we have reached an agreement with a local hardware store to buy a new one more. And that is my report.
I was just going to ask about that. Any questions for Tim? Thank you, Tim. All right, moving on to committee reports, ad hoc committee.
Yes, so the ad hoc committee did meet. This is a reminder that this committee was formed last board meeting to respond to the need for proposed bylaws amendment, consistent with the discussion we had been having about a reduction of board size from eleven to nine. I think it's important to note and sort of frame this with, this has been a discussion that's been going on since I was elected as a board member. This is not new. And I think a while ago, we had sort of informally taken the position that we would tackle term reduction first, which passed and is before the Board of Regents, and then look at board reductions. So the group met and we had a number of ideas that came out of that. I think it's important to mention them, although they're not a part of the proposed amendment. There was considerable work done by the committee members to actually come up with two options for phasing in the reduction of board size and the implementation of the term reduction. However, we learned that there is no pathway for that. There is no provision through the State Education Department to approve of a phased plan, so to speak. And we also, I took the opportunity to consult with Tim Burke to just get some background on how other libraries have handled this and was told frankly, libraries make the shift and deal with the resulting asymmetry of elections. It's just the reality of it, and there is no pathway for us to, you know, course correct so that we can end up with a symmetrical three-three-three election. It also was noted that that typically hasn't proposed significant challenges for boards. Having different numbers of board seats available for elections, and there's nothing that's required by law for it to be symmetrical. So the proposal here became much simpler. And this represents a proposal to reduce the size of the board from eleven to nine, which is consistent with what we're allowed to consider as a board with our charter. We are allowed to have anywhere between.
Five and eleven.
Thinking five and eleven. So you'll see highlighted in yellow, the language change that would constitute the shift down from eleven to nine, as well as some language in red that was recommended also by Tim Burke, just to put a finer point on that we're allowed to choose any single number. Some of the phases had, the phase-in plans had language that included different numbers, and this just makes the finer point that the board only has the ability to choose one single number. This would shift also the quorum numbers for majority votes consistent with a nine-member board, such as five or more affirmative votes for a measure to pass. Additionally, the committee took a discussion around existing practice that was in the current bylaws that indicated that a vacancy could, would be filled by the next highest vote getter. And the recommendation here reflects the committee's position that that can be a chosen practice of the board, which it has been, but isn't required to be in the bylaws and gives us the flexibility to, to not be compelled to respond in that way. But we still have the ability to respond in that way. So I just kind of wanted to run through the major changes of that. Again, we're not taking any action on this today. This is the recommendation from the ad hoc committee and constitutes my report.
Could we change the term limit to three years?
So, great, I'm glad you brought that up. That is not reflected in here because technically we can't make that change until it's approved by the, the state ed. So it's before the Regents. So once, we voted to approve the reduction from five years to three years for the term. That has to go before the Board of Regents and get approved, at which point it can be updated in the bylaws. So that would be a change that would have to happen. It just hasn't.
Happened.
It happened yet, on their end.
I missed a key point, which is essentially why wouldn't you vote on this proposal tonight?
I think last time in the discussion, because it's a bylaws amendment, we felt that we wanted to present it, give it a full board meeting, the, the ability for there to be public comment at the next meeting when we would take action.
I forgot. We're actually required to do that for a bylaw amendment. Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the proposal?
Well, let's take Barbara.
Just had a, a quick question. Reflecting on many of the meetings that we've had, you know, over the last few years, even with an eleven-member board, we have oftentimes just squeaked out a, a quorum. And so I am very nervous about changing the numbers that we present, you know, to the public. I, I, I think an eleven-member board functions quite nicely. I just wanted to throw that, that idea out that, as I said, even with eleven members, we've had trouble many times just having enough people for a quorum. So I just wanted to throw out that idea to you. Thank you.
Thanks. I guess, well, I, I just, I had a question about this three C, the, the, the change in the the, the filling of vacancies. And just, I was surprised to see that change because this was something that we, we did specifically, the board specifically had pretty extended discussions on this. I think it was sometime last year, it was not that long ago, where we discussed the whole process of filling it and went back and forth, and we had a big discussion and decided to, like, you know, stick with that, that
approach. So I was just surprised because it doesn't seem to have anything to do with the, you know, the, the otherwise, the, the, you know, the changes of the ad hoc committee to reduce from 11 to nine. So I was surprised to have that kind of included in here as, because it was an issue that the board had already kind of, you know, spent a lot of time discussing everything, so that.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to address that. I think that that came out of some of the concern about a reduction immediately from 11 to nine in the upcoming term election. It would give the board flexibility in, in the future vacancies to explore. I'm trying to, we made it a really important point to the ad hoc committee was to discuss this in general terms and not specific personalities. Because that's what we feel a bylaws, bylaws should be based on. And so there's nothing that required us to have that level of detail in the bylaws. And having it in there restricts, restricts the flexibility of the board, but it doesn't prevent them from acting and practice consistent with previous years. So I think it was just a consideration and a proposal that would help mediate some of the concerns that we felt like we were hearing from the board and the immediate reduction from 11 to nine in this upcoming election.
So, because one, one, you know, one advantage of having the provision that we had in there, and this had come up when we had issues with having lots of resignations and having vacancies occur and everything, was it allowed at least one seat to be filled extremely quickly because it didn't require a meeting of a nominating committee and that being brought to the board. It was basically automatic that the next person, you know, at that, that, you know, the person, next person that would have had the votes at that election can be immediately offered the open seat and that, as of the very next board meeting, can be up and running and have another person there to help with quorum issues potentially or whatever, just to fill that. And so the, the idea, as I understood, was, was having just one, one vacant, and there's only one vacancy. If there's existing, you know, additional ones, it doesn't continue falling down the, the chain of more people in the election. But the idea was, you know, it would allow quickly filling one seat. And it would also kind of say, well, this is a person who, you know, showed their interest by running in the election and, you know, had a different number of people, you know, put their names in or whatever, you know, may, might have even, you know, you know, would have been the next in line to actually get on the board. So we kind of, you know, have that in place to at least fill one seat like that. And then if it's beyond that, then the board will have to decide and do that. So it's kind of striking that balance. So, you know, I, I'm not saying I'm totally against taking that out, but I think there were reasons that we did kind of discuss extensively about, you know, why we ended up kind of sticking with that. So I just want to make sure that's all considered before we throw it away and go a different way.
Sure. Martian and Barbara.
I don't think we're throwing it away. I think it's always an option. And one of the things that I thought about was in this last election, we had two seats and two people running, and both those seats were filled. If there were a vacancy, there would be no one else who would be the next highest vote getter.
Right. So, so I mean, it wouldn't have even come into play this time, but there have been previous years where we've had more candidates than there were seats.
But this year it didn't, so.
This year it didn't.
If somebody had resigned, we would not have a next highest person. So probably what would happen, and I'm on the nominating committee, would probably happen, I guess, we would resort to what the bylaws now say. Namely, because we'd have a pool of people who obviously were interested but didn't get elected.
And I think this is just practice over requirement. That was my thought in the bylaws group.
So we're not throwing it away. You know, I think your point's well taken, but I was just using this last, this last election as an example. We would not have had anyone else.
Right. It wouldn't have made a difference in the last election because there wouldn't have been anybody in place. So, so, you know, there was nothing there. But I'm saying in other years, it would have made a difference because it would have allowed the board to immediately fill one seat. Whereas now, that won't be able to happen without a nominating committee and then a board vote on, you know, choosing someone. And so it's going to put at least another, practically speaking, a whole nother month out before somebody can be filling that seat potentially.
Probably in that situation, that's exactly what would happen. We'd be like on the bylaws that now exist. But your point's taken.
Barbara?
I think you're muted, Barbara.
Mike's suggestion that the immediacy was really, really helpful. And the fact that it is in the bylaws doesn't prevent us, you know, if there isn't, as the situation would have been this year, from going through the normal process. But the normal process, in my experience, usually takes, like, almost two months. Because by the time you form your committee, you send out, you know, requests for people that are interested. So having that in the bylaws doesn't prevent us, after that first person that you're honoring because of the effort that they put in to actually run for the board seat and showed interest. If that person doesn't accept, then you would go through again the, the nominating process and all that kind of stuff. But I'm very comfortable with what we have currently because it's, it's worked in the past and as I said, yeah, I think the most important thing is the immediacy and the fact that you're honoring a person who has shown a genuine interest, went out and got petitions, you know, or maybe write-ins and, you know, wanted to join the board.
Can I say something? Yeah, I think I'm, I agree with Mike because even though we're going with what we've been doing instead of putting it in there, the board might change and the, and the dynamic of what might change. And someone might be on the board to say, well, why are we just choosing a next person down when that's not indicated in the bylaws? I think we should, we should continue to keep that in, just to feel like quicker.
All points welcome and taken. I guess I would just caution us, we will have discussion at the next meeting before we vote. And in the spirit of not doing committee work in the meeting and duplicating discussion, I, I, I really just want, if there are questions about the report, and then we can continue to discuss. It isn't a foregone conclusion that it's any of this. This was discussed and voted on, and the committee is the recommendation. We had a, we had a job to get done. We wanted to make sure we had something on the table so that we have something to respond to and take action on in the November meeting.
Good, thank you.
Text is me, Building and Grounds. So we did meet on the fourth. We went over quite a few items. So there's front and back notes. Primarily, there's no, no items to vote on, I don't think at the moment, out of this bunch because we're still looking at some of the information for all these items. And one is no longer in need of a vote. I think it was just approval based on our discussions for who's going to make. So I'll just start from the top. The staff is requesting a reference desk modification. When we did construction, it was in the heyday of COVID, and things were built within those specifications. And now that some of those restrictions have lifted, the desk is not meeting the needs of the librarians and the patrons. So there's some accessibility issues and things like that, and ability to work with patrons in a, in an easy manner. So there was a request for $31,000 to rebuild the desk, as well as an additional $9,000 for electrical modifications. And because of the amount of the ask, it does have to go to the board for approval. The committee was unable to make a recommendation out of that meeting because we had a lot of questions that came out of it. Namely, we wanted to do our due diligence and request information on if there was any cost savings by utilizing some of the parts of the desk and electrical that were already there, getting background information on why post-COVID considerations were not taken into account when building the desk. So there were quite a few action items that came out of that, which is why we don't have a recommendation. So Mike and Tim and Mike had some follow-up there. So it looks like we got most of that insight from the architect, which was more or less just that it was built with the COVID considerations in mind and built to spec for what the librarians requested at the time. And now the changes have, you know, occurred. It's not meeting, it's not meeting the need any longer. So not.
So the basic two things were that it does not have a lower section where that's where you, if you, someone is bringing their laptop for assistance, you can't do it on the current desk. And the second thing was, there's only one way out of this desk. So in a safety and security sense, they'd like to have a way out on both ends of the desk. Those are the basic ideas, so.
And then we also had some construct, questions about whether it can be taken from the construction bond. I think, what was the follow-up on that today that we don't have their answer just yet? Remind me.
I personally don't know why it couldn't come from the construction bond. I mean, that whole part of the building was renovated, so. But as you alluded to, change orders during the construction process that were over 25,000 were full, full of our decisions, right? So.
Yeah, we weren't sure if there was an accounting component to that due to like the year cutoff, right? Like if this was done after the end of the year.
That shouldn't be an issue. Like, the only chronological limitation would be when the project actually closes, which we are trying to do. And I just want to point out, George is nodding correctly, you know, because I'm not a financial professional. But until you close the project, you can still spend the project fund, so.
I ask why we wouldn't be voting on that tonight, to sort of kick it going?
I didn't know the protocol. We didn't have like a committee recommendation because we didn't come out of this with a recommendation. We had a lot of questions. So a lot of these got answered after the committee meeting, and we didn't re-meet. So I think we have the need to put forward a recommendation.
Or not.
Is this something that you want to vote on now, or do you want to pause and regroup? Because we can, it just has to have a motion that doesn't come from the committee. Okay, I mean, that's you, if you guys feel like this is.
I just heard timeline in there, and I was just thinking October, November, you know, December. I don't want to force it down your throat, but I'm certainly happy to make the motion if that would be helpful.
No, and I'll say that while we didn't vote on it, I think we all had agreed that if it's needed and it's a, there's a patron need and, you know, for safety considerations and things like that as well, I think we probably would have had this as a recommendation. I think the amount might be less, but we don't have an update from Megan on how much less if we're reutilizing parts of the desk.
Right, but in the past, we've done a higher number up to.
And also, if you wish, I could read you, take about two minutes to read you Megan's and Christina's email on the subject, which would flesh it out a little more. That's up to you guys.
I'm happy to discuss it, folks. We're wanting to have some questions and take a vote on it tonight.
You know, from my point of view, I wish you would discuss it and take a vote on it because I think that the timing, like they're trying to close the project 12/31, and we're in October, you know.
Have you had additional details for us?
I don't think you have to wait for a recommendation if the board wants to vote. Committees are delegations of the board.
I was going to say, we've gotten some of our answers since this, so if you want to read those emails.
So this is from Christina, the head of the department. Number one, the desk is not friendly or accessible for patrons. There's no practical way to serve patrons in wheelchairs or mobility devices, even though the desk does dip down lower in one spot. From personal experience, I can say that when a patron comes to the desk in a wheelchair, I have to speak to them sort of diagonally, and the view is obstructed and uncomfortable with me high up and then down lower. There is also no room for patrons to put their personal items or devices while we're assisting them. The ledge of the desk, which is currently just a few inches thick, has caused patrons to drop library cards, cell phones, tablets, as well as other personal items on the floor. Staff is then crawling under the desk to retrieve these items. Finally, and most importantly, there is no spot to comfortably show a patron how to do something with a laptop or a tablet, which is a service we provide quite frequently. The new desk would have a long low counter that is friendly to patrons who are mobility impaired, and it will provide adequate room for staff to spend time with a patron on their iPad, laptop, cell phone, et cetera, to demonstrate things like how to download an ebook, make a hoopla account, print from anywhere, and much more. We could put a PC at that service point, giving patrons and staff the option of being served while we're standing or while we're seated down lower. Number two, the desk is not safe for staff. With only one entrance and exit, staff is trapped. The new desk would provide two points of egress. One spot remains at the rightmost side if you're sitting at the desk, and one spot is added at the wall next to the restroom to the left if you're seated at the desk. To be frank, in an active shooter situation, jumping over the current desk isn't even an option. It's just too high. At the new desk, staff could, in desperation, vault over the new low portion of the desk. This action, exit strategy, though, is reserved for the able-bodied. The last reason is certainly not as paramount as number one and number two, but explains some of the detailed changes we've asked for, and that is the opportunity to display items in advertised programs. Their old desk had shelves built outward faced toward patrons, which allowed us to make displays or house flyers, advi, advertising programming. We've asked for slats on the front of the desk to display flyers that would otherwise keep the top of the desk clear. Example, a sign about how to reserve a study room or print a document. We could also display upcoming program flyers or the popular new releases this month flyer. If anything needs to be cut from the redesign, it could be the slats and shelving. And then Megan says largely the same things, but I'd be happy to, you know.
I didn't get redundant. The only number I don't have, if we want to discuss voting on this today, is she just said that they might be billing between 10 and 14 hours of architect time, but not how much that is.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
So I don't know if you know.
I can text Jackie.
This is pre-my building and grounds, so I have no insight into like. Okay, yeah. Yeah, Barbara?
Yeah, Tim, I would definitely like to hear what Megan has to say. It just blows my mind that we have spent all this money. Everything that Christina has mentioned seems very, very valid. Why people who supposedly professionally design things for libraries wouldn't have a handicap accessible wheelchair, a help area that is comfortable for both the patron and, and the library staff, as well as the, the exits from, from two ends of the table, so to speak. I, as I said, you hire professionals to do these things, and then from my standpoint, they, they've sort of let us down on this one. But I agree, you know, all the things that she mentioned seem, you know, very, very concerning to me as well.
Okay, well, if it's okay, I'll quickly read.
You can.
Okay. The conceptual adult services reference desk prior to COVID had been planned to feature more open desk surface for patron interactions. However, during the implementation of the improvements to the adult services area, the requirements slash expectations for the desk changed based on the staff's COVID concerns and expectations for future patron interactions. The low section of the desk was designed to meet the ADA accessibility requirements for side approach. Planned improvements for the adult collection and services area were limited in scope. We did our best to achieve the goals of the committee and the staff within the existing space. The area for the adult services desk is slightly smaller than we would have preferred, but location was a key feature in terms of proximity to the teen room, public asset, access computers, sightlines to the two new reading areas, which are fish tank and fireplace, et cetera. That's why we didn't prioritize two points of access from behind the desk. And that's, that's it. The rest is very technical about the wiring, so, you know.
That makes sense. I just have one comment in that I, I, I'm in support of this, and I'll make the motion when we come up with some numbers. Hopefully, Tim can find out the architect while we're chatting. But I would just caution us to, in the redesign, keep in mind future virus outbreaks, right? And not swing completely in the opposite direction if it's likely that the staff might want it to be able to accommodate some sense semblance of safety or barrier in the future if we find ourselves in the midst, unfortunately. I think they're going to reuse.
Yeah, they are using.
Wouldn't be able to be reverted. So anyway, I just offer that as, as, you know.
We're going to keep this.
There's a potential we'll find ourselves in a situation with the, you know, we can't completely guard against it. But I think we need to imagine a future where that's a likely possibility.
Yeah, I will, I will just ask, because having to deal with some interesting choices during the café filled out, if we do engage in their services, they do run the drawings and proposals by a few folks for their sign-off because we ended up having to do something similar with the café when some decisions were made without any input in terms of the window. What, what would that be called? Felf bar? Yeah, whatever that is.
Um, we wouldn't say that it was no input, it was different input. And so just to keep in mind, we have opinions that exist now and different people have different opinions and when those change.
The bar, the height of that table?
Just in general, I was saying.
Yeah, I, I was, just when that decision was made, it was not run by the building and grounds or the vendor functionality. So it was an odd height for any kind of chair. So then we had to pay a move it. Did you get an answer on?
Jackie says she can't find it out. So now I've texted Megan and then I got back to Jackie and said, can you please find a bill and divide by. But I'm not sure she's here, you know, she.
I mean, I can look in email way back.
Yeah.
And circle back around if we want to.
I can keep going through the other sections and then maybe by the time I'm done and we start, we'll go get back and get our answer. So that's basically it on the desk. We had bound, bond council, independent review, which I think passed through our committee as well as the finance committee. We did ask Jenna to go through previous board minutes to see if this was already approved in an earlier board meeting. It was not. And I think our discussion at the committee was that this falls under that $10,000 threshold. So in theory, director can go ahead and approve this, which I think this person Connie Cahill, Cahills? Services have been requested, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that went to the finance committee, basically.
Right.
Yeah.
So mural beautification project, the capital walls grant application has been completed. I fulfilled my action item. I sent you info and a muralist who could provide insight into that grant process and turnaround as he has done multiple murals through this grant himself. And then we had an outstanding question, right? If we don't utilize a grant and want to use the construction bond funds, this would need to be paid completed by the end of the year. So we're making a proposal on that. So I don't know if you've talked to anybody on costs or if you've heard anything back on the grant application.
The bond council issue?
No, the mural.
Okay. No, I haven't done anything on that. Megan says the total cost would be 1,200 to 1,680, between 10 and 14 hours. So 12 is clearly 120 dollars an hour, so.
So we round up in 2K, so the total amount, if we go for an even number, would be 42K or less that we would be approving.
Yeah.
Okay. We want to go back.
I moved to approve expenditure up to 4200 dollars. Is that right?
Forty-two thousand dollars.
Forty-two thousand dollars for reference desk improvements, functions.
I'll second it. Wait, you're on the committee, I don't think you can move.
Oh, shit.
Sorry, sorry. I just remembered that from 15 minutes ago. Okay, Marcia's chair, but.
Can I second it?
Who knows? You can, you can second it and you could have moved because it didn't come from me.
Okay.
Oh, because it didn't come.
Direct board.
Goodness. Okay, there's, well, then here's your first and your second. Vanessa first, Marcia second. So many finite rules. Wanted to make sure it's stuff right, okay. Is there any further discussion on this proposal?
I, I just had one question. It's about the, the question about where the money is coming from, whether this is included as part of the construction project or, or, or not. And my only question was just, just, just to make sure that if we did take this out of the remaining construction funds and accounted for it in that way, that it's not going to delay the audit and everything being closed out.
It will not have any effect on the audit that we're working on for the next one.
Okay, that's fine.
That was our big concern, so that's good. Okay, alleviated. Nothing from Barbara, nothing from her. Okay. Yeah, I want to vote.
We have to pick a call.
Yeah. Do I have to go around or can it be like all in favor, I?
Go around.
Okay, who is all in favor of the 42,000 dollar expenditure for the circulation desk?
Up to 40.
Up to 42, hoping for less. Yeah, 42,000 specifically. Anyone opposed?
Alicia, just have a quick question.
Yeah.
Is there a proviso that is from the bond funds in that resolution?
Yeah, I think that we were pulling from there. We just wanted to make sure that there was no accounting snafus.
That's what I'm saying. That's part of it.
Yeah. I approve that we approve an expenditure up to 42,000 for reference desk improvements from the bond fund.
Okay. Yes, all in favor. I?
Yes.
All opposed. Good call out and good call out for taking the vote. Okay, and I will go through the rest. The rest of mine is luckily just updates, so nothing much to discuss. We did start the discussions on the book shed. The original request, there is a funding amount in here for 75,000, is for two sheds, but we actually think that there might be a cheaper solution, which we're looking into, where we just get the one shed and then we do the book sales in an area inside the library. We are drawing inspiration from Voorheesville's library shed. This would include shed electrical and hardscaping because there's a requirement that it needs to be on some sort of concrete slab of some sort. We discussed whether this would be staff or volunteers. Our chargers is not good selling books and can cross the boundary between for profit or not-for-profit. We had discussed it on our system potentially for selling books after hours where people just dropping money for the books and ultimately decided that would probably be a bad idea or people would try to jimmy the cash box off of the shed. We are currently selling books out of the cafe at about 10 to 12 books a day, roughly 200 a month. So that is actually going pretty well. So that's why we also kind of thought like maybe the two sheds might be overkill, maybe just the one, and then if we want to do a larger book sale, we do something in, you know, one of the, one of the rooms. Cafe update, since, since the committee meeting, because the meeting was the next day, we did have our one-month check-in with Melanie and it was with Tim and Natalie and myself and Mel to see how things were going. We took some staff feedback and patron feedback, as well as Mel's feedback on how the first month went and made some adjustments to some of the storage and bringing in an additional refrigerator that Mel is providing so that there's little less logistical issues with food preparation. Farmer's market update, the season is wrapped. TBD discussion with Scott on contract for new season. Next year, we will need more thorough insurance coverage as advised by our insurance advisor. So we'll have to see what's requested there and make sure Scott can provide that. The book sale table was a success. We sold between 300 and 500 books over the season and I know anyone who was there can attest that people were very happy to see us there and happy to chit chat and give us all their, their patrony insight. So that was really cool. I hope we do it again next year. Next steps, basically the action items that were in bold. We're still waiting on some additional info to have concrete discussions around the book shed and the mural, the circulation desk, not so much, we just voted on it. And working with admin to adjust processes in collaboration with the cafe as we get staff and different feedback. So we'll probably do another month check-in and see how things are going and make adjustments as needed. That's it. Moving on to long-range planning. Okay, the long-range planning committee met last week and Tim and Natalie also joined the call. And so we made the decision that we were going to start fresh with, from the 2016 plan because there is a lot that was done pre-COVID, so much has changed, so we're moving along. Tim is going to put together some, some ideas from that and maybe some things that we do want to implement in the new plan going forward. But otherwise, we're starting a fresh document. So what I really wanted to bring up with everyone today is that in order to start the process, we are planning on doing some board visioning. I think it's really important and Barbara had stressed this before when she was reading, leaving long-range planning that the board have involvement in this and that we all be coalesced around the idea of having a good long-range plan that is actually implementable. And so next week, you'll receive an email from me that has three, has a, has a response to three questions. I ask, please, 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 that you complete this. It's just asking some basic information that can help the committee come together and see where the board is aligning on its vision. And then after that, we will present that very briefly during our committee time next month, the responses from that, and then move forward. We are currently, we have established our, the first couple of steps within the long-range plan. So we're going to gather our community information. We are going to look at the survey that Luanne had completed last year that had a number of responses and take what we can from that. But we know there's a couple of other things that we may want to find out and so we're going to survey folks again. Came up with an idea of who our stakeholder groups are and want to make sure that everybody has the say in this part of the process. We are planning to do some additional surveying and focus groups as well and then move forward from there. We haven't established the rest of our plan. We just wanted to get the first few steps in place so we could start with the board visioning. So be on the lookout from that brief survey. It will ask for your name, but that will be confidential going forward. It's just to check and see, make sure some, this one person isn't submitting the same type of responses over and over again to sort of pad that area. But that will be coming out soon and we fully expect that we can have a long-range plan together by the end of this fiscal year. And that is it, unless there are any questions or comments or other people that just really want to actively engage with it and join us.
Just have one suggestion on the stakeholders.
Yes.
You just might want to refine this to consider people who are disabled.
Okay.
And senior citizens. By business community, I assume you would include the chamber of commerce because we now have.
Yep, yep. And we hadn't truly defined those categories, so please give us some more feedback if you come up with other areas.
Actually, I'll place on the question here.
Perfect.
So that, you know, it's real time now, but other people.
You want me to just keep rolling?
On rolling.
The next one is mine as well.
You got a little screen over there, so.
I know. The finance committee also met. We have established that our regular meeting time, unless there's any concerns about it, is going to be the Tuesday before the board meeting. So we met this, coming this past Tuesday at 5:30 PM. So anybody that wants to join, learn more about finances, that's when we're going to try and regularly meet. And there was not a quorum at the finance committee meeting, so we are going to have some things that come out of this, but they will need to be moved as we move forward. And I'm going to draw George in to explain some of this. So obviously, we went over the finances, everything looks good. George did discover a discrepancy in the budget that there was some investment that didn't get totaled into the total number, so it wasn't. So we're going to explore that in the, after the start of the year and see if there's other changes that need to be made to the budget if we're going to amend it. It doesn't have any impact overall unless you want to chime in on that piece at all. I'm going to skip the investment strategies piece and speak a little bit to the board designated funds. We had talked a lot about the capital reserve fund and Mike had come in with the great idea of us looking at that big chunk of funding that we're putting forward and doing some board designated funds. So we taught, we started the conversation about that and plan to continue that more next month so we can bring a proposal for the board about some funding that we want to board designate for particular areas, one-time purchases or other things like that. We also talked about making the budget, putting money in areas that we want to expand in the budget that are consistent year over year. So now I'm going to circle back to the investment strategies and I'm really going to let George explain it because he's going to explain it better than me.
That will be determined. But we did talk, so typically, and just kind of as background, you know, we get the tax levy in, in pieces, the biggest piece of which comes in October. I haven't heard that it's here yet, but it should be shortly. And last year it was about 2.8 million dollars. And then in December, at least last year, we got about 1.2 million, which is 4 million. And I think the levy was about 4.3. So then again, in May or June, we get the balance of it. And often when they do pay it, they net out any tax cases against that. And what we did last year with it was, you know, in order to invest it, we put it in CDs that we see on the investment report that mature at various times throughout the year to meet payroll and, and other expenses. And I think, I think it was a good strategy to do that. I think the thing that's difficult is you can't estimate exactly when you're going to need the money. So, you know, I think this year we've had a little bit of, of, I guess, I call it cash creek, very technical term for, you know, things to start to build up a little bit. And, you know, we could take it and then reinvest it in a three-month CD, but it just seems like, you know, there's some effort to that. And we did discover in discussions with NBT that they have a product called Intrify Network Deposits. And essentially, it's just like another account. We have probably four accounts with NBT and it's like another account. We can do things on the portal. Money would first get deposited into our general checking account and then get transferred to that. And they're, they're liquid investments, so, you know, if something else came up, we could take out any amount of it without penalty. They currently pay about 5.17% interest, which is pretty competitive. And Jaclyn mentioned that they saw some rates that were proposed that we did CDs and that does seem competitive with it. And I think I put in my little write-up that even if we were to later on, if we're in CDs, I think it would be good to have this type of mechanism because, you know, right now we have about half a million dollar in the checking account and if we could move a lot of that into the investment account and then just draw it out when we were needed, you know, at 5%, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it's enough that it's, it's worthwhile. And we are required from a fiduciary standpoint, you know, by the state controllers office to invest the funds. They kind of want that. The funds, the other thing that I was somewhat sold on in talking to the guy from NBT and a year ago, a year ago, I guess, I didn't think they were that competitive in terms of the rates and everything. And I think the one good thing that he brought up was that when you do it like this, it gets invested in the network, but there's a reciprocal, so they get money back from other banks and it's all split up so that it's insured by the FDIC. So it's, you know, guaranteed. But it does make the money available to NBT to give loans and things like that to help the community. So, you know, and I was somewhat, you know, I thought that was a good. Originally, I was looking at a company called NY Class. And even though they have NY in their name, they're out in Colorado and everything, but their rates right now, now we use them at the fire department, they're about 5.25. So they're eight base point, eight basis points more, which again is very close. And I think that if we were within a quarter to half a percent, I think it would be, it would be good. And the way it would, you know, as I said, the money would come in, we would keep it in invested funds until we needed them. So, you know, basically, they know when, what payroll is going to be and they know if the check runs are going to be, so they can transfer the money as needed and leave a little bit of balance to take care of just some things like insurance and things like that that are paid every month. I'm trying to think of, if there's anything I'm missing. I do think it, it's a good option because we can do something else at any time. Like, you know, right now, it's, it's a, it would be a good thing to do, so.
I'll add a couple of things from the finance committee discussed and then I see Barbara has her hand up. All this money would be FDIC insured. It is 100% liquid. We are able to get access to it within a day or two. And again, like George said, this is held in a local bank, so it has a community benefit as well.
I just want to give mine after.
Oh, okay, Barbara, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask.
I just wanted to ask, how do they get around the $250,000 per account FDIC coverage? And are there, in the past, when we've done something sort of like this, the bank had to show that all the bonds or all the monies were covered by some kind of a bonding. How do they get around those different things?
So currently what happens, there's two things. So the money that we have in our accounts, which is held at NBT, they do provide some kind of collateral. So they pledge T bills or something, and we get a, a statement every month showing the collateral. And then our CDs are broken out in such a way with different banks currently that they're less than the FDIC maximum. And this is essentially a similar thing in that they take the money and they split it up between the network so that it's always, and put it in different banks so that it's always less than the FDIC maximum coverage. And by, in that way, and I think there was something in here that, you know, there's a $100 million maximum that you can invest. I don't think we're going to have to worry about that. But so, yeah, it's really, it's split up between banks in order to, to keep it within the FDIC.
Yeah, my question was just, what are the risks, if any, and what would be the counterargument to not do this?
I did, I missed.
Any risks?
You know, I mean, being FDIC insured, it's like, I mean, there's a note in there that, you know, nobody's ever lost an FDIC investment. I mean, if we did, I think we'd have bigger problems than that and everything. That was the risks. And then what are the alternatives?
Well, the, the counterargument, what would be a reason to not do this?
And I can't think, I mean, you know, we could do it in laddered CDs, but I think the coverage and safety is similar. And I guess the reason I like this is.
Say that there is not a reason not to. I mean, I, I just.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, because I don't want to just say, oh, you know, there's absolutely nothing. But I just liked it for a number of reasons. And I can't think of anything, you know, bad that it hasn't.
I appreciate that. I, I just wanted to just a statement, have a question. I'm glad you're here. My criticism in the past has been that, in the past, we've gotten recommendations on these types of things from the people who would be selling us the product, which always was a conflict for me. I just didn't quite get it. And so, short of your public comment, kudos. I'd like to say I'm really glad to have you, George.
And just as an aside, Jackie was in the Finance Committee meeting, our fiscal officer, and she also agreed that this was a good idea.
Sure. And there's really two things that were important to me. This is one of, I do think we could do better with our investments. And the other is closing out the June 30th thing. I mean, we just got to put that behind us. And it's like, so, so that's it. Then I can say, I accomplished my bucket list, you know?
Well, you can't say that because I don't want you to.
Well, I might say that. It's not what, you know, current.
I feel like we might need Tim, Marsha, Barbara.
So I just wanted to say that George is a little bit downplaying it. I mean, it's a fabulous discovery that everyone at the Finance Committee meeting was enthusiastic about. I am a good devil's advocate. So I'll say the only negative I can think of is you could get 0.8 points higher with the class system. But as I understand it, this is far more convenient for day-to-day transfers.
So worth the slight.
Worth that slight difference. Yeah.
So, you know, it's funny when you say salespeople and everything. I think my only thing that I don't like about this is I sometimes wish the bankers would come to us and say, hey, you've got, you've got $500,000 getting 0.02%. Why don't you move it here? And this was just a fluke. I was in making a deposit for the fire department and I just asked the question. And so you should talk, we're very competitive now. And so, you know, I wish.
Maybe what you did over there last year woke them up.
Marsha, did you? Yeah, just a couple. Thank you. I, I second what Vanessa just said. Thanks. Thanks for being here. It's a good one. Just a few questions. In the Q and A, it says you can exclude particular banks. I'm interested in the ratings of these banks, given the state of the bank in the country. So I'd like to.
We'll check and see if, you know, if we could say we only want to rank, or we only want to invest in banks with higher than, and to be honest, I don't know how banks are.
Assuming that they weed out, you know, they have.
Yeah, I would think they would do that anyways. But we can find that out.
Well, I'd like to say we should try to use New York banks. This is more national. But I, I say that recognizing that diversity is probably a good idea also.
And they note that there are 75 banks in New York State.
Yeah. But it might be good to diversify as well. I assume there's no fee, there's no fee on withdrawal. This is.
No, they're not. You can just move it around as you need it.
Yeah.
The only limitation which was waived during COVID, there's some, you might know more, Part D or something, there's a regulation in banks that you can only do six online transfers between, I guess, money market accounts and your checking account a month. But that's waived right now. So it isn't an issue. And we didn't think, even if they bring it back into play, that it would be an issue because, I mean, that's, whatever that is, one and a half a week, which I don't think they'll have to do it that often.
And they have no minimum balance?
No.
In terms of withdrawal. If I want to withdraw a dollar?
Yeah.
There's no problem with that.
Yep. And it's all done online. So they can, you know, initiate the transfers and it occurs overnight. So the funds are available the next day.
Barb, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Finish. I'm done. Okay. Barbara, did you have one more comment?
I just had a quick question. Considering that the gentleman from Capcom has been doing the laddering for us without any charges, is it possible to at least touch base with the gentleman and see if he has a similar product or whatever? I would just, simply hate to say goodbye and, and not talk with the gentleman.
I think I would say we could do that. I think it would be good if we did this so that we could get the tax levy money invested somewhere and then follow up on that because we could move it back and forth. And I think they could very well have a similar product, basically. It might be a little bit easier, the fact that NBT is our checking account. So, you know, making transfers back and forth might be a little bit easier. But I think we can certainly do that. But if we get in, if we get in $2.8 million and don't invest it in something for a month, it's a lot of money. It would make me sad.
No, I just know that, you know, he has done it gratis for many years now and has served us well on, in very low interest rate times. So.
Yeah.
As I said, I just think it'd be fair to, to give him a shot at this new product.
Okay.
Are we voting to?
Well, there is a formal recommendation that was, the bank didn't have a lot of guidance accepting either of resolutions. So I drafted up something, him ran it by the attorney that made a couple of word changes. And I think that it was sent out from what I remember.
We have it. We have it. I need to know which is the current. I have two copies.
Well.
I have one.
There was something in the middle.
Yeah, the one of them has the, the last line or further, the first further resolved is funds as needed within the NBT operating account. And the other one ends with meet the daily needs of the library involving check runs, payroll, cash needs, and other expenses.
I'll be able to verify in a minute.
Okay. Yeah.
So which line are you talking about?
The first further resolved. The very end payroll run. That's the right one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't have this.
Yeah, I think we have the first one in our project. So. Because we did not have a quorum, this is not coming from the committee. The committee members who are present support this unless Mike wants to say.
No, I'm strongly in favor.
So I would move that we, I would move that we approve the resolution to add NBT Bank Intrify Network Deposit Account for Investments.
Are you able to move as a member of the committee?
Yeah, because it's not coming out of.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we have the language of the resolution, which I assume Alicia will read if we get to the point of voting.
Sure. Just, I don't believe what we have in the packet is the current one.
We put the current one in your mailbox, but there may be two.
If I only have one, which one do I have?
That's correct.
That's what I thought, but there was so many documents.
Can you just read the?
What's, what's a piece of language that's in the correct one? So we can just check.
In the correct one, under the first further resolved, it should end with including check runs, payroll, cash needs, and other expenses.
Yes. Okay. I misheard you a minute ago. I thought I had the wrong.
That's.
Thank you. For the whole thing?
So.
Did, you just made the motion?
I made the motion.
I was second.
Okay. Do I read this whole thing as part of the thing? I, I don't know if you need to read the whole thing aloud.
Just incorporate it.
Okay. Does anybody else know? Does any, yeah.
Do we need to?
Why don't you read it?
Just in case.
You're putting me to work. All right, we are taking a motion to vote on the Gilderlin Public Library Resolution to Add NBT Bank Intrify Network Deposit Account for Investments, but my 19, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gilderlin Public Library, Library is hereby authorized to open the Intrify Network Deposit Account with NBT Bank to be used for the purpose of investing library funds, including the library's tax levy receipts. As they are received, cash funds currently held by LPL Broadview Funds from current LPL investments, which will mature over the course of the following year, which funds will first be transferred to the NBT Bank operating account and such other funds currently in the NBT Bank operating account, which are in excess of the immediate disbursement needs of the library. Further resolved, that the Intrify Network Deposit Account will be established to only allow transfers to and from NBT Bank operating account, and that the director and fiscal officers are authorized to form such transfers as needed in order to maintain as many funds as possible in the Intrify Network Deposit Account, and to transfer money back to the NBT Bank account to meet the daily needs of the library, including check runs, payroll, cash needs, and other expenses. Further resolved, that nothing contained herein changes the signatories of any other account maintained by NBT Bank. Further resolved, that the library director has the authority to deliver to NBT Bank a copy of the resolution and to execute any other documents and agreements necessary to open an Intrify Network Deposit Account without delay, which is within the authority granted by this resolution to open such account. The undersigned.
That is the end of the resolution. The rest is just a secondary.
Bye. Read the rest of it.
You can say all the lawyer-y stuff.
So it's open meeting and just for the people who may be listening in, I think you should just.
Yeah, okay.
Just a follow-up question. As you've read it, does this mean that we've cut ties to LPL already without giving them a chance?
We still have the investments that are maturing over the next, the course of the next year that would remain there. And it doesn't stop us, I mean, it doesn't stop us from, you know, at any point saying, you know, let's take a million dollars and put it in CDs or, you know, and we might want to do that on some longer-term investments where we have the money or, or designated funds. So it wasn't meant to, to cut that. It was just meant to make sure that we transfer the money without delay so that we can invest it. But we can change that at any time before they come to.
And the Finance Committee is committed to continuing to look at, at rates and different investments that get us the best return. So we may return some of this in the future.
Right. And, and this would let this money get, you know, put into this account immediately when we get the tax levy and start earning, you know, a good rate of return. And then, and then if it turns out we find that there's like CDs where we're going to get, you know, significantly, you know, or, you know, a higher enough to make it worthwhile, interest rate that are, say, you know, six or nine months out or whatever, we could take a chunk of this money that we're not going to need for six or nine months and put it in that and just still keep the balance in this account. And then we just give us that option and make sure we don't have money that's sitting at, you know, 0.2% or some, you know, tiny amount. So Barbara, I asked a variation of your question at the Finance Committee meeting the other night. And the group basically agreed that in either bank, anytime somebody wants to come with them with two or $3 million, they're going to be happy to have it and invest it. So I'm sure that the committee was sure that the bankers at Broadview would take that point of view. Be happy to have you back if conditions weren't, you know. So it's kind of the opposite of what we did vis a vis NBT last year. You know, and you follow the money, I guess.
You follow the user.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned that we're not picking up a, a product that's also available at what you call Broadview now, without giving them a shot at it, you know, after all their years of being so kind to us and saving us all kinds of service charges for managing the money, so to speak. So that was my main concern.
And that's, I think that's a valid concern. I think what we're doing tonight, what we're hoping to pass is just to get that money in there so we can make a couple grand off of it in the next month until, you know, until we.
While you explore.
Yeah.
I think come up with a better offer. We're not weighted to this.
A counteroffer.
Yeah.
We come up with a new resolution.
But it, it just says the money's going to start working for us in a way that it hasn't been.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. I read the whole thing.
Do it again.
No.
Two times faster. And I didn't mess up that fast.
All in favor of, no, I will not read it again, but all in favor of passing the motion to do the whole thing. Add NBT Bank Intrify Network Deposit Account for Investments. Say aye. You opposed. It passes.
Yay. I'm the next two as well.
Go ahead.
Can I sign this?
Yeah.
Ask George.
Grab two of them and one by January.
So I don't, the Audit Committee has not met. I don't have anything to report. The only thing that I want to say is I know a couple of people mentioned they might have a lead on someone to join the Audit Committee. We're still searching. So please let us know.
I just suggest that we put in the minutes, we thank George for his work.
Yes. Could we please have the minutes include that we are thanking George for his due diligence?
Give Narina the right one.
Those are both.
I do have the right one.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's it on audit. And then upper Hudson Library System, business as usual. We are getting ready to look at the next year's budget.
Excellent. Policies. With Ms. Narina.
Well, I'm sorry, we did not meet. Policies did not meet, but I, I, I'm aware of what was discussed last time about coming up with the policy regarding the programs. So we're, we're still intending to do that and then get into whatever, wherever Vanessa left off with policies. So hopefully this month we can get to meet at least once. And then in terms of foundation, they did not meet because of forum issues. But I believe they did approve the $3,000 donations for the trunk or treat program that the library's putting on. And so they, they just sponsored $3,000 last year for candy and they're doing the same this year. So we thank them for that. That, that's all I had unless Tim.
That's it.
If you want to see what $1,000 of candy looks like, go to Tim's.
Candy's so expensive.
Nobody has had a bite.
That's, that's horsepower right there. All right. So moving on to personnel.
So the Personnel Committee met earlier this week. The, the subject of discussion was a retirement incentive plan that, that the committee voted to recommend to the full board. I'm going to, it's the, the language of the, the eligibility criteria and everything for that is, is, is in your, the materials you have. I will kind of very briefly describe it. However, some of the, the discussion and of this proposal really requires the discussion of specific individual employees. And for that reason, it, it really belongs in executive session. So I'm happy to answer questions about kind of the mechanics of how it works, but a lot of the specifics about. specifics about, um, the, a lot of the discussion, I think, has to be deferred to executive session. So the, the basic idea is, and part of the rationale for this is, is there certain, um, the, the, part of the ongoing reorganization at the library. There are certain positions that, um, in order to, um, replace certain roles with other different job titles, different roles, um, it would facilitate things if certain people currently holding positions were to take an early retirement or not early, but take a retirement, um, sooner rather than later to allow that restructuring to happen. Um, and the mechanics of what is proposed here is that, uh, certain library employees and it's defined as those employees who have um, at least 20 years of service at the library and who are eligible, um, for, uh, full retirement without penalty under the New York State Retirement Service would be eligible to take this early retirement, um, offer. And, and they would get, um, for each year of, um, service to the library, they would get, um, the equivalent of one week's worth of, um, their, their, uh, uh, current pay. And, um, this would be an offer that would be extended and, um, it would, it would, for, for a limited period of time right now, and people would have to take that and agree to retire before the end of this year, before the end of December in order to be eligible for this. And it's a one-time offer just now. It's not a ongoing policy or, uh, ongoing thing that people in the future would necessarily be eligible for. The, there would be an immediate, you know, uh, upfront cost to this, to the library, um, to make these incentive payments. The exact amount is going to depend on who exactly chooses to take the library up on this. No one is forced to take this. They, they would have to opt in and decide they wanted to take this retirement and take the, the, the payment to, uh, to retire. Um, but there would be an upfront payment from the library. There would, however, that would be offset by some savings because some of these people due to their seniority and the, the current, um, you know, salaries that they're, they're, um, they're making would be, uh, replaced with people, um, that would be, uh, at a lower pay scale. And so there would be some savings, uh, over the next, um, probably, you know, likely the next several years, depending on how long they would have stayed with the library had they not taken, you know, do, were they not to take this early retirement? So there would be some savings that would offset that. Um, but the exact amounts of those are, depend on, um, which people, you know, take the library up on the deal. Um, I'm happy to answer questions kind of about the mechanics of it, but again, a lot of the specifics, I think, need to be reserved to executive session. So I think the idea is that we're going to defer that to the end of the meeting so that we can go into executive session off the stream. So.
I just had a, a, a quick question. Um, um, are we prepared or does this, um, plan allow for everyone who's eligible to participate? Can we afford that?
It is, it is, it is actually, the, the number of people that are eligible is actually a very, you have relatively very small number. And so if, it, it would be, it would be perfectly fine if every person that's eligible did take, take it. That's, it's not, that, that, that's anticipated, that's anticipated as, as a possibility and that's, that's.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else before we move on to the labor management?
Well, labor management is not met, so.
And last but not least, for development with Barbara. Do you have an update for us? Might be needed again.
No, we have not met.
Got it. All right. For committee reports, um, looks like we don't have anything for old business or new business. So I'm confused if there's nothing on old business, um, because I had anticipated that we, uh, would have an opportunity to discuss, uh, conversation that was started last meeting regarding the pledge. That's for November. The reason why is we were anticipating possibly a little more public comment today and we were going to take use some time to take that into consideration as well. Um, so we had moved that to November. Moved what exactly? Could we not?
Well, can I make one quick, just, I, and I, I totally support, uh, you bring that, that back up and bring it back up for discussion, but given that last month we had a, uh, it was kind of a lower turnout board meeting when we ate people present and we ended up in a situation where there was no majority of the board for, for either side of the resolution due to those numbers. And this month, again, we have the same number of people here with eight. It's not the exact same eight, but it's almost the same eight people again. And, you know, by my count, unless there's a bare minimum, you know, one or two people that change positions from last time because we still have these absent people who are not there, uh, we're likely to end up in the exact same situation this month with not a majority for either side of the proposition. So.
Sure. To be clear, I wasn't looking or expecting a vote. My comment was just on when this agenda was developed, we didn't know who would be participating. And so I'm surprised to not see it. Um, and I, I came prepared based on the last conversation to offer a comment. And so I guess I'm just confused. I can understand that we're not going to vote, but in the same way that the public had an opportunity to comment tonight, I'd like an opportunity to say something. Yeah, we can do the conversation or the, the comment now or when we vote. It's up to you. If you'd like to do it today, that's.
But also do it in public comment.
Yeah. So I just, I mean, I just wanted to say in regards to, um, the pledge, I thought about it a lot since the last meeting and started to do a little bit of research and stopped because I didn't feel like the burden of the research should be on me for this. Um, but for what it's worth, um, I think there are a couple of very important points to highlight, um, in advance of the discussion next time. Um, saying the pledge is actually not a policy, so I, I began to be confused in reflection on what we actually put it on. Um, additionally, took the opportunity to look back at some prior meeting agendas and minutes. And, um, it was never actually voted on, as far as I can tell, to be added. There was a point when it wasn't a part of the agenda and poof, it appeared. Um, so I guess I'm kind of asking us to think about what we're considering and voting on if it isn't a policy and why we're defending a practice that was never codified, um, in discussion and decision-making by prior boards. So I think that that's important for us to consider as we go on to the other. I'd also implore my colleagues to actually research, um, the history of the Pledge of Allegiance and what it actually stands for and where it came from. Um, and would like to just say that, um, I want to make it known that saying it or not saying it should not be a litmus test of your patriotism or commitment to the country or public service. I will say I did go home and do more research and it only sort of reinforced my position. So I will say that I did do my light work on that. So I, I, and I mean, I guess you're the ranking officer. I think that it is, um, we have some work, someone has some work to do. I'm not sure who it is, um, to set the frame for a discussion or action next meeting because I'm not sure what we would be deciding on.
I just wanted to, to share that I'm sort of surprised about the minutes because I've been on the board probably 20 plus years and there hasn't been a single meeting where the tradition, um, of ours, starting the meeting with a pledge didn't happen. So maybe it wasn't reflected, but, um, as I said, it's been a long, long time that, uh, the pledge has been said, you know, at, at all our meetings.
I just am making the point that longstanding practice is not the equivalent of policy and respectfully, the board has existed long before you joined it. And so, you know, I know that the library, um, has records of the meetings and I can point you in the right direction, but I've decided to stop the research. So if you're interested in researching when it established, I guarantee you there was a point when it was not included and for a significant number of years. So.
Uh, was it, can you go back to when the library opened here?
Yes.
Is that?
Yeah.
In 1997?
Yes. And it was not on the agenda and was not part of the agenda or the meetings for the entire time. And there was no.
No, it may not have been on the agenda, but what I'm saying is the tradition that was said.
So I'm just saying, considering that, we should be really thoughtful of what action we take next week, if any, and what that would mean considering this is not a practice that is in policy and as far as I can tell, ever voted on or endorsed by the board.
Thanks for sharing that. I, I'll just comment that the agenda is set by the president. So ultimately, that's, um, my perspective on this too, is that it's an issue of the president choosing to set it.
Yeah. So we would not need to vote that because it's not, it was never voted in, so there's no reason to vote it out per se. And therefore it was not voted to be confirmed because there's nothing, no action for this board to take. So subsequent, I don't know what you call it, administrations, subsequent, um, officers who preside over it would have the discretion. Take that action items, talk to Kathy then. Shaggy is not here. And then come back to y'all with some information on what comes of that discussion.
So just so everybody knows, uh, there are board minutes going all the way back to 1957. Um, although the first three years, they're not every month, uh, that we have.
A little lighter reading years. I will not be doing that much research, but I will do some additional one. But okay. Anything for new business? I don't have anything on here.
Oh, I just wanted to go by, this, I don't even know if this matters, but, but the library was planning up to, um, help me with a, a drive for Domestic Violence Awareness Month where we took the Capital District Women's Bar Association, the various other organizations. We accepted donations of gently used business attire to support the Family Counseling Center in Glaubersville, uh, Fonda, part of Fulton County. And, uh, it was very successful and I really appreciate the library for that.
We have the box like full.
The box was overflowing.
Yes. Overflowing. A lot of money is flowing.
We had to stop the drive early because I had to coordinate transportation. So I'm very helpful and very grateful to the community for coming on and displaying this cause.
And as the library director, I'm also very grateful to the community to, you know, not only is that a great cause for the people who need the help, but it's also like, um, it's a weird point, but it's environmentally sound to be recycling this clothing, you know, so.
Maybe we should consider having an ongoing box.
Um, there is a, there's a bunch.
With that. With that.
Yeah.
The library is.
So the carrying closet does have a limited box here that you couldn't bury.
I have so much stuff I was going to bring in, like.
There's plenty of places to take.
I have enough place for you.
Great. Um, all right, great. Uh, I think we can just go to our next public input session. Anything?
I've not received anything.
You. Um, so now I move to go to executive session, right?
Yeah, but you have to read that.
Oh, I have to read that.
It's on your agenda.
Oh, is that the exact wording? Okay. I had it up just in case it was different. Okay. Do we have a motion to move into executive session to discuss issues pertaining to the negotiation of a term or condition of employment pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law with the CSEA Units One and Two?
I have a motion to stand. So before any discuss, or you vote, but before any discussion, we have to stop the stream. So for the sake of the public, you know.
We vote. Everyone's in favor.
Is everyone in favor of moving to executive session? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
No.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh.
No list.
Do we have a, a separate meeting link for Barbara to get to?
Sure.
Yeah, there's a separate link.
Okay.